This is the 12th day of January 2021, the first meeting of the honorary planning commission. Do we have a roll call, please?
Sure thing. First, we have Chair Brassfield.
President.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson. Potentially absent. Commissioner Fletcher. Might be muted. Dan, can you please confirm if you're here?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Thank you so much. I can hear you now, that last part. And Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Commissioner Milich.
Here.
And Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Thank you so much. We have all present except for Commissioner Dawson, who I will mark absent unless.
Thank you. Getting on to the agenda, do we have any public comments?
I would like to go ahead and take a moment to announce the process for.
So before we do that, just in terms of the agenda protocol, the first item was the consent items, which includes the approval of the minutes.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. I just stepped out of the office mentally. Let's have the agenda item for the minutes, please. Any comments regarding the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a revision I'd like to request on the page four of the December 8th meeting. Right in the middle of page four. There is at the end of sort of a paragraph refers to my comments. It says Commissioner Latassa suggested by a ducks. And I believe that's a misinterpretation of something I said, because I, you know, that wasn't my feeling. So I'd like to straight, strike that sentence.
Okay, any other comments?
Move to approve as submitted with that one sentence stricken from the record.
We have a first and a second for striking that statement.
And just to confirm, I have Commissioner Reed who who made the motion, and then I I couldn't tell who was first for the second.
I think it was Dan.
Yeah. Well, sure.
Okay. Thank you for confirming. And for the vote, we have Chair Brassfield.
Aye.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson is absent. Commissioner Fletcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Latassa.
Aye.
Commissioner Milich.
Aye.
And Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, and for the remainder of those minutes, any other comments? Then I will ask for a motion to accept the minutes.
I thought that's what we just did.
We just did that.
With, yeah, we actually, we we just struck one portion of the.
No, I I my motion was to approve as submitted with the one section stricken.
I I beg your pardon. I didn't hear that. You're a little distorted today, Hanson.
Sorry, I don't know how to, I'll just mute and I'll try not to talk. How about that?
Not gonna happen. Okay, then let's move on if that is.
There's a first for everything.
Let's move on to the, it's. As I understand it, the next two items that were on the this for discussion have been pulled. Is that correct?
So before we go to that, I'm just, if you can open it up for public comment, and so Sarah, if you could.
Go back to public comment.
Sorry about that. Thanks.
On items not on the agenda.
Yes.
Yes. So for public comment on items not on the agenda, I just want to go over with the public our process for public comment for this meeting. So we do encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, because you're connected live to a secure government meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey, where there's an approximate 10 second delay. And on Comcast Channel 25, which there is up to a 90 second delay. If you'd like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate any of these delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone number on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. And since the meeting has already begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, which is a toll free number. Or you can dial 669-254-5252. And then enter the webinar ID. And if one number does not work for you, please feel free to feel free to try another. And these numbers are also listed on the meeting agenda. And our webinar ID for this meeting is 161-990-8039. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, simply press pound. More detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publiccomments. And if you're already in the meeting and would like to make a public comment, please simply raise your hand in Zoom. Or if you're connected by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute yourself when called upon. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. And we ask that public commenters turn off TV or computer speakers, or simply go to another room while connected on the phone. As background noise can interfere with the broadcast. I will call on each public speaker in order of hands raised. And the chair is designated a three minute time limit for today's meeting, and there'll be a countdown shown on the screen. So we ask that you please stay within your time limit. And with all that being said, I'm going to take a look at our attendees. I don't see anyone raising their hand on this tie at this time for public comment. Again, if you'd like to make a comment about items not on the agenda, simply raise your hand or press star nine. And it doesn't appear that we have any hands raised at this time.
Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to the agenda. And I assume that we have someone to make a presentation.
So I'd just like to make an announcement for items three and four. We received a letter from the applicant who's also the appellant, and they've requested that those items be continued to our next meeting, which is January. And maybe Jennifer can help me. I failed to look that up right before the meeting. Is it the 26th?
26th, I believe.
Okay.
26.
So we're requesting, we should open it up for public comment on either items three and four. But they, our recommendation is continue those to January 26.
Do we need a motion?
You will need a motion. Sarah, can you just open that up for public comment in case there is any?
Absolutely. So just a reminder, if you would like to make a public comment on this item, please join the meeting at zoom dot or zoom gov. And the link to that is located isearchmonterey.org, or you can dial 833-568-8864. And our webinar ID is 161-990-8039. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand in Zoom, or simply dial star nine if you're connected on the phone. And there doesn't appear to be any hands raised at this time, but I'll keep you posted if anyone does choose to participate.
Thank you. In that case, I would solicit a motion on postponement.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
We have Hudson with the first, and we have Steve with the second. And any other discussion? Okay, I'll ask for a roll call.
Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson seems to still be absent. Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Aye.
Commissioner, sorry, Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. And just to confirm, was this vote for both properties 500 and 508?
Correct.
Thank you.
And that action will continue this item to January 26.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, and who am I making a presentation?
Fernanda Roverry will, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Fernanda?
Yes.
We're waiting for you.
Yeah, I'm getting the presentation ready. Okay, thank you, Chair. My name is Fernanda Roverry. I'm a Senior Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. And today the item is 425 Alvarado Street, a use permit amendment to allow the tasting room, the Whiskey Club, to become a full bar. And this item was heard last year by the planning commission. But a use permit amendment is required for any changes to the use. Staff's recommendation is to approve the use permit amendment to allow a full bar. And this, the site is 425 Alvarado Street in downtown Monterey. The general plan land use designation is commercial. And as you can see, it's a through lot between Alvarado and Tyler Streets. And then here's Franklin Street to the north. Across the street is the Alvarado Street Brewery and Grill. And right next to the 425 Alvarado is Helms and Full Moon Restaurant. The downtown specific plan, specific plan requires a use permit for the bar use classification. Which is why this item came before you last year. However, the applicant has applied for a use permit amendment. Because he was able to use water credits from Epsilon Restaurant located on the same parcel. And the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District approved the water credit usage for a full bar on December 17. And so a use permit amendment is required to change the use from a tasting room to a full bar. Here are the main changes that the applicant is requesting. On the left side is the approved use permit, and on the right side is the request. The the use would change from a distilled spirits and wine tasting room and retail bottle shop to a distilled spirits, wine and beer bar and retail bottle shop. The original use had 13 seats at the tasting area, and the proposed use has 11 bar seats and 20 seats at tables. The hours of operation are, the applicant requested to change them. So before, they were Monday through Thursday, 11 to nine, Friday to Saturday, 11 to 10. But the applicant is proposing Monday through Saturday, 11 to midnight. And Sunday hours would remain the same. For security, security measures would stay the same. However, the applicant has added a glass wall separating the bar area from the restroom and store area. And also, the the Community Development Department has requested that an ID scanner retain ID information for 48 hours when people are carded. The use would not have live entertainment. And it would not allow consumption of purchased bottles on site. No customer parking is proposed because none is required. However, parking passes would be provided for employees. And there would be no water credit allocation, meaning that the city would not be issuing new water credits. Because the applicant was able to use existing water credits from Epsilon Restaurant on the same parcel. And this is, this shows a change in the floor plan. Before, the tasting room would be on the left. And you can see here that there are chairs and tables on the left side. The change is now this is a bar area, and there are bar seats right here. And then on the right side, there are tables also for people to see, sit and eat. Oh, and here's the glass wall separating the bar area from the store and restroom area. This is another view of the, what was approved, the tasting room area. And on the bottom is a view of the proposed bar area with 11 bar seats and 20 table seats. And this, the, this isn't changing. This is the retail bottle shop area, which would have display cases of different types of alcohol, and the restroom is on the left side at the, at the very end. The findings for approving the use permit amendment are not changing very much, because the use is still a commercial business type, which contains active uses such as retail and drink tastings or or drinking, a drinking establishment. The existing tenant space would be at an existing commercial building. No building expansion would take place. And no minimum parking requirements are required for commercial uses in downtown. The use would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or the adjacent neighborhood. Because the security measures would still be the same. However, in addition, we are requesting that an ID scanner retain information for 48 hours, which is a standard practice used by the police department. And then the conditions of approval are the same as last time. For example, expansion of hours of operation requires a permit amendment. There is a 12 month trial period to evaluate compliance with the conditions. If conditions are violated, the use is subject to a revocation. And the applicant is required to abide by the security measures, including carding people with an ID scanner that retains information for 48 hours. And compliance with solid waste and recycling is required per city code. In conclusion, the recommendation is to approve the use permit amendment to allow a full bar. And I'm here to take any questions, and the applicant should also be here.
Any questions of Fernanda by the commission?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. What happened to Epsilon Restaurant? Is it still viable or is it closed?
I believe it's right now closed. They're not actively serving people. And what happened was, the reason that that more water was available for the bar is because the Epsilon Restaurant gave up six restaurant seats. So those six seats, the water usage for those was given, made available to the bar. So that allowed the bar to become, instead of just a tasting, to become a full bar.
And so they could have Epsilon Restaurant reopen with six fewer seats?
Yes.
Okay. They use the reason of staying open until midnight every night except Sunday to come, to join in with other business bars that are open until midnight? What bars are those?
The applicant said that during Car Week and other special events, Helms and other businesses, they do special events that are open till midnight. So that's why he wanted midnight to be the closing time. But he also said that this was only going to happen during special events, and that he doesn't intend to stay open till midnight. He's his time, the time that he intends to be open is 11.
Fernanda.
And just a point of clarification, most bars in our city are open to 2 AM. You know, the closing time is at 2 AM.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Mitchell Sonny. I'm on the call. I'm happy to take any questions myself.
Okay, one other question. My, my last question is, I see that the bar is entered on Alvarado Street, and the retail and the restrooms are on the Tyler Street side. Is there an entrance through the back from the Tyler Street side?
There is not. Oh.
Excuse me, sir. Let's let, let's handle questions to staff first, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
So the the floor plan does not show an entrance on Tyler Street.
There will be a fire exit?
The building department looked at the floor plan and said that only one exit was required. So the one on Alvarado Street.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Steve.
I think last time, this was before us, I inquired as to where, what the distance was to the the next residential unit. And I think Kim told me 900 feet. Is that right?
Let me see. It's the, the apartments on top of the Walgreens. Those are the closest.
Yes, yeah, that's, how close?
So that's just across the street. So that's 100 feet?
If you want, I can bring up a GIS map and we can measure.
I'm just wondering what, you know, we've had the problems in the, in the past with the bull and the bear regarding noise from adjacent residential units. And I would like to avoid that if we can with this project.
I think the other thing that's important to remember, the places where we've had complaints with the Bull and Bear was predominantly because they had music in an outside patio.
Right, okay.
But let me go ahead and I'm pulling up the GIS map, and I'll be able to give you a measurement.
And the other question I have was, okay, and that was answered. The time was before was 10 o'clock for the bar, and now it's midnight. Request is midnight, right?
Yes, right now the request is midnight.
Okay, thank you.
So no live entertainment is proposed, meaning no live music or amplified sound. In the future, the applicant would like to add that. That would require another use permit amendment and another hearing.
Okay, thank you, Fernanda.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, Terry.
So thanks, Fernanda. The, so the condition number five says that the, the use permit expires in 24 months. And the applicant has to request an extension 60 days prior to the expiration. I guess that's a standard condition.
Right. In our zoning ordinance, if the use is not established within 24 months of approval, then the use expires.
Oh, I see. So if if it is established, then condition five doesn't apply.
Right.
Okay. And the, the building department review of the plan regarding the second exit happened recently?
It did. It happened last month.
Okay, with the current plan. Great. Okay, that's all I have.
One further question. Is the back of the building Tyler Street, or is there more building before you get to Tyler Street? I'm very, very confused about not having a way of getting out of the building if it's street to street.
I believe that the, the entire bar area would, yes, it's, the floor plan goes all the way to Tyler Street.
Can we bring that map back up?
Sure.
I, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Fernanda, the, the floor plan only goes halfway through to Tyler. The landlord apparently is working to separate the two, the one spot into two. So Tyler, the Tyler side would have its own exit. It's at a different level, like at a height. The stairs that you need to take to go down to the Tyler side of the store. And I believe the landlords are working with the city to separate the space into two. They've got building permits posted on the door on the Alvarado side. So.
Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I, I'd like a follow up on my previous question, Fernanda. So I'm looking again at condition number five, and I don't, I don't find that language of condition five. I don't think it's. Um, I don't think it's finished. I think it needs to be clarified that that 24 month expiration hap- happens unless the use has started. I don't see that language unless the use has started in that. It just looks almost like, well anyways, if you could look at condition five and, and maybe revise the language of that, unless I'm missing something.
Okay, um, does it, let me look. It might say unless a building permit is issued.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything like that. It's just, it's, it's missing that part.
Okay. We can add, um, I can look up the exact language in the code.
Yeah, you just need to add that one part about unless use starts.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for Fernanda? Then let's move it on to the applicant. Any questions of the applicant?
Hmm.
I, I have a question.
Uh, sure.
You're going to be serving meals. Is there no door between the restaurant and your bar to allow that transfer of food?
Uh, no. So I'm going to be serving meals from the two next door restaurants. Uh, and it'll come through the front door and take out containers. I do not have the water credits to prepare meals on site, nor do I have any kitchen facilities or food prep facilities on site. So they would, the orders would come in, in takeout containers from the next two restaurants.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Let's bring it back to the commission for comments and.
So we need to open it up to the public for comment, please?
Well, you're right. Let's open it up for public comment and Sarah, you're, you're on.
Sure thing. So just a quick reminder related to public comment. Um, if you are in the meeting, you can raise your hand by, um, simply using the raise hand function in Zoom or dial star nine if you're connected by phone and would like to share a public comment. Just a friendly reminder to join by telephone. You can dial 833-568-8864 and our webinar ID is 1619908039. And I'm going to take a look at our public comments. Um, it doesn't appear that we have any public comment on the attendees. Um, it does look like the applicant has their hand raised. So I don't know if we want any, um, allow the applicant to share their thoughts. We don't have any public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let you know if any here.
Thank you. Um, if the applicant wishes to make any comments, I would certainly allow him to.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to address, uh, the commission. So I did hear a couple of concerns about the ambiance and how it's going to impact, um, the neighborhood. I'd like to assure you, the ambiance I'm going for is that of a nice, high-end hotel bar and I plan to cater to a mature crowd. I will probably be priced out of the, you know, younger crowds', um, budget, if you want to call it that. And, uh, the idea is just to have a relaxed place to go to. Um, as far as the extended hours are concerned, I was urged by a handful of neighborhood businesses to extend the hours, just even if I wanted to stay, uh, you know, plan to close at 10 or 11 PM. They want me to have the opportunity to stay open till midnight on weeks like, uh, Fernanda mentioned, you know, the Car Week or any big golf tournaments or any other such, or during the holidays. So that, you know, I'm not the only business that's closed. Um, again, I'd like to assure you that it is going to be a nice, relaxed place and not a loud bar. Um, and, uh, I hope I do you guys proud, if you do give me the permit to go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, let's open it up for commissioner's comments.
I, I don't have any comments. I just would, I mean, I can make a motion to approve, uh, permit amending, uh, approving permit amending PA 20 dash 0276. Uh, oh, sorry, to amend use permit. UP, uh, 20 dash 0233, um, pursuant to the resolution and findings as submitted in the packet.
And you have, uh, don't forget, you've got, Jerry, you want to clarify number five?
And with the clarificate, yes, I'll add the clarification that number five is only applicable if they're not up and running.
And that also includes the 48 hours retention of the, uh, uh, the ID info.
Was that not in here as well?
I, I want to make sure that's in the motion in the result.
There it is. It is a condition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a first and Steve, you're a second?
Yeah. I said.
You're a first and a second. And Sandy, did you have another comment?
No, no, no.
Thank you. Um, then I will ask for roll call vote.
Absolutely. So I have the first is Commissioner Reed and the second is Commissioner Millich. And for the roll call vote, we have Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson is absent still. Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Millich.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Thank you. That motion carries.
And good luck.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay.
It is an appeal period.
Of 10 days to the city council. Thank you, Fernanda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, next item. Kim, is that on you?
It is. Thank you, Chair Brassfield. Um, let me just start my presentation. Can everybody see my screen?
We can see you.
Oh, I didn't choose the right screen. I'm sorry. Just one moment. How's that?
Perfect.
There you go.
Great. Thank you for your patience with still getting used to sharing screens and everything else. Um, um, planning commission, um, this afternoon, you're being asked to consider a referral from our city council. Um, it's actually something that you looked at several months ago and we're just bringing it back to you for additional consideration before we prepare, um, the final amendments. And the referral from the council was to look at reducing commercial requirements in our specific plan areas to increase the development of affordable housing. And, um, I'll be sharing with you a little bit more detail. Um, this original proposal was brought forward by council member Williamson. Um, and his report is attached to your staff report. And what he was really looking at is, could we allow housing behind and above any first floor commercial retail space in our specific plan areas, areas? Um, and with the idea of increasing housing in those areas. And the planning commission considered this several months ago and you had a, a pretty vigorous debate. Um, and you came back with four recommendations that we were supposed to follow up on and provide more specific guidance. Um, you were looking at opening up residential use um, in the Alvarado district of our downtown with the exception of Alvarado Street and, um, Franklin from Pacific to Tyler. Um, the second item you really looked at was Lighthouse Avenue. And that was to include language specifying residential may be permitted above, behind, or subordinate to commercial. You didn't have that much enthusiasm for changing the North Fremont specific plan. You identified a lot more concerns with that area. And then with the changes to the coastal plan for Canary Row, um, that was seen as something that probably we shouldn't pursue at this time is ground floor residential on Canary Row. So just to go forward, um, and explain in more detail, um, the downtown specific plan area basically extends from Van Buren Street in the lower Old Town neighborhood all the way to Lake Elastero. Del Monte is the northern boundary and then it sort of zigzags across the bottom. Um, what this map represents with the Cs and the NPs and Ps, P means ground floor residential is currently permitted by right. So it's permitted by right in our east downtown, sort of by the Royal Presidio Chapel, um, as well as the area we call the East Village. It's conditionally permitted sort of behind City Hall here in that area that really buffers to the neighborhood. It wasn't permitted, ground four, floor residential in the Alvarado Street district, which is the red area. Nor was it permitted in the open space district, which is basically our sports center and the ball field. So what you're really being asked to consider, if we focus, um, the discussion is should ground floor, first floor residential uses be permitted in the Alvarado district? So what we're proposing to you are two really minor changes to the specific plan. Um, one is this is the use chart that corresponds to that graphic. And basically to say that fronting on Alvarado Street and the first block of Del Monte and Franklin, that first floor residential would not be allowed. And I have a graphic to show you that in more detail. But in the remaining area, it would be permitted by right. Now you clearly could change that to a C as conditionally permitted, which would be a public hearing. Um, but I went with a more liberal interpretation and said it would be permitted by right. And so this is, um, the area shown in red is where frontages where, and this is already policy, offices and personal services and I added, and residential uses are prohibited on the first floor. So everywhere else in that district, it would be permitted by right, as I'm currently suggesting. You could make it conditionally permitted. And this is the language. There was one's minor change to the actual text of the objectives. And then it just says that, um, residential uses on Alvarado Street and the first blocks of Del Monte and Franklin Street are prohibited. And it refers to that figure nine, which I just showed you. Moving on to the Lighthouse specific plan area, and this is just a reminder, the original draft of the Lighthouse specific plan had residential uses in the, um, sort of that blue area on Lighthouse Avenue is conditionally permitted. It went to the city council. The city council approved the specific plan. But I am aware of at least one resident who stood up at that meeting and said, "We shouldn't give up commercial space on Lighthouse Avenue." And they can't, had me come back almost a meeting later and to amend the plan to prohibit ground floor residential or residential uses, um, ground floor residential uses on Lighthouse if it wasn't in an existing or previously used residential structure. So this would be going back, um, and allowing, um, uh, new residential first floor uses in the Lighthouse Avenue character area if they're behind subordinate to commercial uses in the Lighthouse Avenue character area. So you would be able to build a residential unit behind a commercial storefront of some depth. And like I said, this was very close to the original proposal that went to the council. Based on the public comment, they took it back and said, "No, we want to be more restrictive." Now the current thought is maybe we should open it up again. And this is the change to the objective. Um, the plan will allow mixed-use projects with residential uses above, behind, and subordinate to commercial uses in the Lighthouse Avenue character area. I did want to point out, um, the Sausal Land Company that owns, um, where Medici Pizza is and the new building on Alvarado that goes through the Tyler Street and is located next to the Bull and Bear. As you're probably aware, the upper two levels have been leased with residential uses almost since day one. But the bottom floor has been particularly difficult to lease facing Tyler. And when they heard this idea, um, they had their architect just prepare. This is, um, a view of the building. And to the right of the screen, and hopefully my rights, your right, uh, where it says existing commercial space, that would be Tyler Street. What they're thinking about is behind that existing commercial space to allow residential. And then the existing building that's shown to the left is the current mixed-use building that faces Alvarado. So they're looking at flexibility to try to solve a leasing issue that, you know, that they've been working on. And I think Jerry Anderson from Sausal Land Company might, um, be on the phone today and participate in today's, um, public appearance item. So our recommendation, um, is that you receive this presentation, accept public comment and provide input on how to proceed. If I roughly have the language right, then I will, um, bring back this item, um, in sort of a pu- formal public hearing process with the environmental review. So the planning commission can forward the recommendation to council. But I wanted to give you one additional opportunity to look at the language changes, um, before I provided, um, you know, more information in a much more formal, um, format. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have just one question. Where you show the specific plan and you show the crossouts of language, it all makes perfect sense. On the, uh, report that, uh, came from our last planning commission meeting on page four, planning commission meeting minutes, Tuesday, April the 28th. Um, there's one paragraph at the bottom that says on Alvarado Street and Franklin from Pacific to Tyler, ground floor residential would not be permitted. And I think you meant to say and Franklin and Del Monte from Pacific to Tyler, uh, would not be permitted. But other, if you made that change, then your comments from the last meeting, well, the April the 28th meeting and the specific plan changes would be completely in sync.
I did, I did notice that difference in the language and corrected it this time. Um, to match that graphic, I'm sorry, here, we'll just, to match this graphic.
Yeah.
Um, that's where offices and personal services are prohibited on the first floor. That we would, um, specify residential uses are also prohibited there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Terry.
Um, so thanks, Kim. Um, can you go to the language of the downtown specific plan? The blue, oh, there we go. So, um, I'm just wondering whether, uh, the, well, first of all, will that little, uh, colored maps that, that you just had on the screen uh, be accompanying the language in the specific plan? Or is, so that figure will, will accompany the language?
Yes. So figure nine is currently in the specific plan. I'm adding and residential uses to this graphic in the title. And then if you see in the proposed objective language, it says figure nine. So you'll be able to refer to figure nine to have a graphic representation of what we're suggesting.
Uh, without that figure, uh, the, the term first blocks of Del Monte Avenue and Franklin Street, uh, with the figure, then it makes sense. Without the figure, then you wouldn't really know what first blocks means. So I'm okay with that one, I think. Um, do you see my point?
I do. And that's why I struggled with it as well. But, um, that's why I wanted to make sure figure nine was there to graphically show us what we meant.
Yeah.
What I was recommending.
Okay, um, that's fine. And then if you could go to the Lighthouse, uh, language. So, uh, let's see, the, um, so above, behind, and subordinate to. Uh, so that, that phrase, above, comma, behind, and subordinate to. Um, did you, uh, you, you worked that one over?
Yeah, I don't understand it.
I, I just think that might. I, I just think that might, um, that there may be some hidden problem in those, uh, five words. And the comma. They can, they can tell us what to do.
Well, I appreciate that.
I have problems with subordinate.
Maybe it would be more appropriate to say above and behind commercial uses.
Yeah, yeah, what, what, what was the intent of subordinate? It's not above or behind, is that in front of, inside of? I don't know what subordinate means.
Yeah, I think I got that language and I didn't maybe scrutinize it as much as like from the original council discussion. But now that you're bringing it up. You know, I think what we mean is we continue to want residential uses above, no matter what. But then behind commercial uses. Maybe we even need to say behind commercial uses. Fronting Lighthouse Avenue in the Lighthouse Avenue character area, we need to be.
Then don't you mean subordinate to the use? That it's attached to, physically attached to. Otherwise subordinate makes no sense. Because you could have a use in one block and have a so-called subordinate use to that in another block.
And, uh, this is haunted, I mean, I, I, we're getting into discussion a lot, but it's. To me, I see subordinate as, so if, if you're. Entering on the Lighthouse. But the resident is still, the residence is still behind, I mean, it's still, the residence is on Lighthouse. Right? It's not necessarily behind. Uh, it just happens to be behind the use, but it's still, the front door is going to be on Lighthouse. Uh, but that would be subordinate to, you know, you could have the little narrow door. You know, and, and you walk in and then you're, the residence is behind. I mean, I, I, to me, I, I don't dislike the subordinate use language. I mean, part of this is, you know, with the specific plan is. A document that the. The planners who are. Looking at this make some determinations whether or not this is subordinate to. Um, clearly if the residence was, you know.
Then it would be nine or subordinate, not and subordinate.
Well, it needs to be behind and subordinate, right?
Yeah.
It's a behind and subordinate.
Well, not. Cause you don't, you don't want the guy with the narrow little door fronting on Lighthouse Avenue to put his Christmas lights.
Yeah.
Up and around the commercial building.
That would be subordinate to.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess what I understand and then now just going behind and subordinate would be. I mean, it's behind and subordinate is one term, not two terms, not behind. And so, and, and then you can also have some or subordinate, it's behind and subordinate.
That's why.
Which means that, which means that you couldn't have. Three feet of commercial space. Or, or 10% of commercial space and 90% of residential, because that.
Yeah.
That would not be subordinate to the commercial use.
Yeah.
So Kim, however you get that.
Oh. So it sounds like maybe subordinate's okay?
It sounds like you got it right the first time.
Okay, that, that's fine with me, I just, I just wanted to make sure. But I was, I was thinking like Hudson just said, that the, uh, behind and subordinate. Could almost be read as two different, uh, requirements. But they really are joined at the hip by the and, so, uh, we've lawyered it up, I'm happy with it.
And we pretty much logged it to death.
I mean, if you want to make it more clear, you can say uses behind and subordinate. And above. Right? Just flip the whole language and so there's not a question of whether you're, you're. There are three choices, there's just two.
Well, couldn't you have it behind and subordinate? Have it be ground floor behind, taking up what would otherwise be parking space?
Well, but it needs to be subordinate to, again, the example would be, right? So I have 10% of the, of the, uh, space. But that is bordering on, uh, Lighthouse be commercial. And 90% of the space be residential, that's not the intent, the intent is that.
Yeah, I understand that, but that doesn't address. If it's behind. Oh, well.
It would still be subordinate to, right? If you still have, if you have a, if you have a, a retail space and a parking spot behind that you could build on. That would still be subordinate to the commercial space, that's how I would read it, so.
Oh. So are we suggesting more changes or leave it?
I would suggest leaving it the way Kim wrote it. I think she's in there.
Yeah, I agree with Dan, I think it's okay.
Okay. Uh. I, I do have a, a comment and, uh, the original on Alvarado side. Alvarado on the bottom end. We just recently had a presentation that talked about it, what happens in the next 10 years. That, that may be major changes to that area, so leaving it as permissive. I think could be a problem if that bottom end. Uh, they're probably behind. Uh. The McDonald's area, it's going to be a little damp around the edges. If we allow them to do whatever they wish. Is that an issue, Kim?
Well, I mean, clearly. You know, we, we learned at our last meeting, um, for transportation. That depending on how we handle sea level rise in that area. That area that's currently shown as, as yellow. May flood in the future, will likely flood in the future. Um, if we have a seawall, it's probably not going to flood. If we have a viaduct, we're probably going to lose a portion of that area. Um. Our plan at this point was. Um, if you remember the presentation was to come back, um, to continue to work through those alternatives and do. We've applied now for, um, two grants to cost out moving all the utilities. To help the city pick a future option for Del Monte Avenue. And then with that, um, come back and change our zoning regulations. For that whole area potentially, as well as Oak Grove. Yeah, you know, as, as we further the conversation on what's going to be our option here.
I think it's part of my concern is that. If we. Pass a new. Little rule here on that property and then. Someone decides to run with it, that we're borrowing trouble. And I just throw it out there for discussion because. If that's going to change. 10 years disappears in faster than most people realize. And. If we're already. Even considering that, I think that needs to be part of the discussion on any change. Okay, uh, any other questions for Kim? Let's open it up for public comment, if you would, Sarah.
Worth thing, Chair, let me go ahead and just take a moment one more time and announce the process for public comment. So just a reminder, we encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, which is a secure government meeting. You can join the meeting by finding the link at icertchmonterey.org. Under the recent tab or join over the phone by dialing eight three three five six eight. Eight eight six four and our webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. And if you would like to raise your hand, either use the raise hand function in Zoom. Or simply press star nine on your phone. Just a friendly reminder, we do have a three minute time limit for public comments with a timer that'll be appearing on the screen. And it looks like we do have a public comment. Um, it's under an email address. So, uh, Jerry. Uh, I can't read the rest of it, but I just. Um, gave you permission to share your public comment, if you could please unmute and share your comment with us.
Thank, thank you, Sarah. Uh, this is Jerry Anderson, uh, good afternoon, Chair Brassfield and members of the planning commission. Uh, very pleased to be with you today. You have, uh. You have seen, uh. The rendering that was made part of the package and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that that may raise. But my comment is simply this, that I'd like to say that, uh, the addition of housing. And, and also the types of businesses which are compatible with and supported by that housing has contributed greatly to the. Revitalization of our downtown these last few years. And so I think. Um. In general, we would like to see more housing downtown. Uh. Uh, to further that and additionally, we really do need more housing in our city. So, um, with all that said, we, we think that any and all reasonable steps that can be taken to support that to happen should be taken. And to that end, I support the proposed changes to the downtown specific plan. Um. If, as I said, there are any, uh, questions about our plans or that, uh, that architectural rendering that you saw, I'd be happy to. Answer them, but, uh, that, those are my comments.
Thanks, Chair. Any questions? Let's get Sarah, if you could go on and see if there's any other comments.
Sure, absolutely. It does look like we do have one other public comment at this time. So Esther, I just went ahead and gave you permission to share your public comment, if you could please unmute.
Good afternoon, everybody, this is Esther Malkin, I am with Monterey County Renters United. And I currently serve on the board of the Housing Resource Center of Monterey County. And I just wanted to encourage you guys to. Um, include any and all housing, including behind, uh, commercial properties. Because those, those are actually very important to. The workers that are going to be working at the businesses that are going to be right in the immediate area. And so those jobs in hospitality and retail are classically low paying jobs. And if these workers don't have to own vehicles or use, um. Transportation that would cost them, they would be more inclined to be able to afford units that would be downtown. So I just highly encourage you guys to not hamper any attempts to add to the housing. Supply, which is extremely needed. As it is, um, we hope that many of the workers that have already left will come back. And by being able to offer them some, uh, affordable housing. Near jobs that they might be able to get would make it more attractive for workers to come to this area. Thank you.
Thanks, Esther. Sarah, anymore?
Uh, there doesn't appear to be any other additional public comment at this time, but I'll be sure to let you know if we receive any additional feedback.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's bring the discussion back to the commission.
I, I just had a question, Kim, and I forgot to ask this earlier, so. Right, so we're, uh, what? So can you, so there's, there was that one map, uh, where you had NP, the Cs, the, um. Are we changing all of it to permitted by right in downtown? This in the downtown area, no matter where you are in the downtown area. Uh, is that the plan or are we just changing in the pink area, the Alvarado Street District? So you're muted, sorry.
Kim?
Sorry, I guess I have to unmute myself before I share my screen, so here we go, I'll try it again. Um. I did not propose any changes to the conditionally permitted first floor residential sort of from Van Buren Street. It's basically to Pacific. And then see, it's permitted by right. In the east downtown and, um. The Pearl District, so it was really just in the downtown I was focusing. Is making it not permitted on Alvarado and those couple blocks of Del Monte and Franklin, but permitted by right everywhere else. Now the commission could say, we don't want it to be that flexible, instead of permitted. We want it to be conditionally permitted and we want to review a use permit.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my comment is that we would go from the most restrictive, which is not permitted at all. To the least restrictive, which would be permitted by right in the area. It, it just seems an odd step to go from the most restricted to the least restricted in this. Area that we would want to be able to have some control over it and you would want it, want it to be. Um, conditionally permitted, at least that's, that's how I would, I would take it, so.
That's why I'm here, if. The commission wants to review use permits. For first floor residential in the balance of the Alvarado District, then this should be. This language should be changed from remaining to dash C versus permitted by right.
Yeah. That, that would be my recommendation.
I agree.
I don't, I don't know if anybody else, I mean, there's arguments for it all to say that, well, it should all be permitted by right. But I think if we're gonna, if we're not going to change at all. Then we would want to, uh, again. The, the area that's the, the most, the Alvarado is the, the, one of the most. You know, historic parts in the state, but let's not just. Let's have, we, we, having control over that is, is, is important.
I agree.
And I guess I have the same question for Lighthouse Avenue. Do you want that permitted by right, behind, subordinate and above? I, I mean, clearly above is permitted by right. But do you want that first floor in, on Lighthouse to be conditionally permitted? Or as long as it's behind and subordinate, staff can make that call.
I would like, I would like conditionally. Permitted.
So this would be where the circle is would be changed to conditionally permitted. Potentially.
Yes.
I, 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 I don't know about that, I mean, again, that's where all of a sudden we're adding costs to development by having to go through this process versus. Um, you know, a, a full youth permit to get that approved. Um.
Well, let's look at it. I, I was going to suggest, let's look at it, but, but. Alvarado first. Does everybody kind of agree that, that should be conditional?
I do.
I do, so that's why, my point. Uh, so then if we go to Lighthouse. I'm sorry. Okay, no, I, I appreciate the disagreement. But. It, that's just looking at it. And, uh, the concept of an area, the, the second area obviously in the discussion is Lighthouse. Is it the same feelings?
Well, you know, I would hate to check. Have someone go in there and change the commercial nature of Lighthouse. Uh, I think we should be able at least to take a look at it. And make sure that. Uh, the commercial nature isn't changed unless of course. Uh, we think maybe the commercial nature should be changed. Which I don't, by the way.
My only response to that is that, I mean. Is that we have it, it's subordinate to the commercial use. Versus. Um. You know, it's behind and subordinate to, so again, it shouldn't, it, it, you know, I, I don't see that if. Commercial is still going to be primary, so.
Subordinate is such a weasel word. It can mean any damn thing you want it to mean. And that's why, that's why I think it's okay to use subordinate. But I think the commission should have the ultimate say as to whether it is quote unquote subordinate.
Uh, I think that, um. Hansen's point. About the Alvarado Street area. Is appropriate for the conditional requirement. But Lighthouse, the language of this change already. Makes it a restricted of where you can put the residential stuff. And I know as a person who occasionally makes applications that. Having to get a use permit sometimes scares clients away. And I don't. I, I don't know why we. Would need to review every application that would come in like this on Lighthouse.
And I look at, at North Fremont as an example, it's, it's already in the specific plan that. Basically, it's going to open up the, the allowance of such construction. So if we're, you know. Or we're separating one part of the city of Monterey, I, I appreciate our, our main street downtown is. Needs special consideration, but do we need to make the same rules? For Lighthouse, I think is the question. Or do we want to? Uh, this is supposed to be a dis- discussion that the city council asked and I. Uh, trying to find places to put in these residential units is, is a problem. And we're trying to get over this mountain that we're running up against. Dan, you got any thoughts?
Well, I agree with you. I think Alvarado Street is our primary focus and those, those should be conditional use permits. And, but I don't feel that same way about the other areas in the city.
Sandy?
I agree with that.
Okay, in this, this particular case, Kim, are you looking for a, a resolution, recommendations?
No, I think I have direction now. I'm going to go back and I'll finalize these changes. So what I heard is different than in this packet is that for the downtown in the Alvarado District, the remaining area other than Alvarado, it should be conditionally permitted. And on Lighthouse Avenue, the first floor, I sort of heard a two, three split maybe, but just I, that it's maybe okay if it's permitted by the majority, but it didn't need to go through a public hearing.
So I agree with that. So I think it's maybe one four.
Okay.
One, five.
So this won't be the final answer. If I've got that right, I'll formally draft the amendments and resolutions and we'll have to conduct the public hearing.
That's what I assumed. You, are we done with this issue then? Oh, thank you.
I, I have one more comment, if that's okay. I, I just wanted to compliment Councilmember Williamson for bringing this up, because it is tweaking things to try to, you know, get incremental housing opportunities. And it's, it's a, I, I like that sort of thing of, you know, Andy was doing similar thing before, trying to squeeze the blood out of the turnip wherever we can to, to get more housing where it's appropriate.
I want to make one final comment also, and that is, we've seen the reverse plenty of times where residential dwelling on a commercial street is turned into a business, like Lilify Coffee in, on Lighthouse Avenue, and there are several others. This is just going the other way, where you already have a commercial building and now you want to allow for an additional use, which is residential, subject to certain requirements. And that's, that's pretty mixed use right there.
Yeah. Any other comments? Okay, then, Kim, I think you're up for the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, so Agenda Item Seven is an informational report on the Chair and Vice Chair rotation. And I went to go ahead and prepare the report. And I made a mistake last year. I don't know what else to say other than just to say I made a mistake. I was pasting in the code section for the rotation and it clearly says that in July, the, the Chair rotates, not in January. And I misunderstood the 2019 code amendment that went through by council. So Chair Brassfield has served a full year, who I shortchanged, was Chair Latassa the year before. So I wanted to apologize. At this point, my recommendation is that I'll bring back in July the formal rotation, which Chair Freeman, or Vice Chair Freeman is up to be Chair. And I think it's between Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Fletcher, because everybody else has served as Chair, it would rotate. But I did want to apologize to Terry. I made a mistake last year and I think it was even brought up in the public hearing, so.
Give Terry six more months.
We could do that.
Now.
Right now, yeah.
No.
I think we should change him six months.
No, no.
Kim was nice enough to call me and, and, you know, I'm fine with it. I, 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 I realized that it was a strange little change. I remember Hansen actually brought up, are you sure that's right? When we, when we did that rotation. And I was going to make a joke about having my mob ready to storm the council chambers. I want you to all know, I thought a joke like that would not have been appropriate, so. But I'm overall, I'm cool with it, thank you.
You don't want six more months? Would you serve if they gave it to you?
Well, that would mean taking it from, from Mike. So no, I'm, I'm fine, we'll just.
Remember, ad maiorum dei gloriae. That was Loyola High School motto.
And what does that mean in ancient Greek?
And the greater glory of God in Latin.
I know.
So I serve at the pleasure.
He just wants to be a martyr, that's all.
Like I said, I serve at the pleasure. It's, it's, it's a, an honor. But how do we want to work this?
Well, I'm, I, I'd suggest that you just continue along. You're doing such a good job and, and we'll, I'll get the rotation next time it comes around.
Well, I'm glad I'm comedy fodder. But it, it's fine with me either way. Or Sandy, are you, you want to step up?
You can take six months away from me, it's okay. I'll give, I'll give Terry another six.
Yeah, so my recommendation is just to keep it going for the next six months and then Sandy in July, you get to start.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just go back and, and sort of normal rotation.
That's fine.
Thank you. Kim, are, Kim, are we set? Or we need to make a motion?
We're good.
Thank you. And I believe the last thing on the agenda are the plan, the commission of planning notes.
I have nothing to add. I will provide you, the council had a pretty extensive discussion of their work program on January 5th. It includes like 78 initiatives. Some of those are planning initiatives, so I'll make sure to send those to you. One of them is these commercial space requirements. Another is accessory dwelling units, which is, we're still committed to finishing. And then after we finish ADUs, we'll be moving on to wireless, which has taken us forever to get back to. So those are sort of the high priorities for the Planning Commission. The, the other one that you'll see probably on your desk, but is being led by our City Manager's Office is cannabis. And there's a fun new survey and public information platform that was just launched by the city. If you want to go to our website, you can put your two cents in regarding cannabis. Those will probably be the priorities for 2021.
I have one question, a serious one, and that is Planning Commission and the school board district. What authority does the Planning Commission have regarding the controversial additions to Monterey High School? The lights, the noise, and the entry and exit via a tiny little pathway to neighboring streets? The neighbors that talk to me are 100% agitated and against turning the stadium into an arena that for entertainment. And the exit especially is so small. I don't really think the trucks can get through it. And yet I think this falls under the aegis of the school district.
So the school district is the lead agency. They are their own government agency. The city of Monterey has submitted comments on the school district environmental document, as well as a lot of residents. So I know their board will be slated to take that up and pick a preferred alternative and go forward with their project. But the city isn't the approval agency for that high school project.
So who has the authority to stop the lights and stop the little road that goes in and out?
School district.
Taxpayers. Thank you.
Anything else? I have one comment. Are we in Commissioner comments?
I'm just going to open up Commissioner's comments, so go ahead.
Okay, so I was rather alarmed by the, the sea level rise transportation study. And I'm really glad the city is pursuing grants wherever possible. And I was wondering if it would make any sense to agendaize at some point sort of a grand strategy session to just discuss the big picture of, of, not that we're making any decisions right now, but just, you know, make sure that these, the Canary Row, you know, the tunnel, Del Monte Beach, the surveying that's needed. And if, if there's sort of a master list that could be good, put together and reviewed of what, what the big strategy is of, of trying to come up with policy about this issue.
Kim?
Well, we clearly, you know, our next steps with the study, and I think, you know, additional meetings and additional outreach are, you know, warranted. So, you know, we need to come back with more, you know, we really need to figure out how hard it is to move the utilities under Del Monte Avenue. To think about it, the major PG&E lines are underneath Del Monte, the major AT&amp;T lines. So what we were trying to do is we've applied for two grants to get engineering staff to be able to cost out if it's possible to move those, or, or what are our, our alternatives? So we, we're pursuing that. We need to have listening sessions with the community to talk about the rest. So I think that's appropriate in some form. I don't know what that looks like yet, but the more people we can get talking about this, the more ideas we need to have.
And Kim, that includes gas?
Yeah, our gas lines, telecommunications lines. Our sewer line actually goes down Del Monte Beach. It's under the sand and it goes all the way to, that's probably our most vulnerable line, and then we'll probably have to get either moved or buried first. Will be sewer. And then once it gets to Del Monte, you get the gas lines, the telecommunications lines, and the electrical lines.
Cable do? Cable TV?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I wasn't suggesting specific discussions tonight, but just that, you know, sort of a, a master list of, you know, the tunnel, Canary Row, Del Monte Beach, utilities, transportation. You know, there are all these sort of big, blocky issues that, that are facing us. And, and it would be great to start sort of organizing them and coming up with that list.
I think that city already has a list, doesn't it, Kim?
We have, we have maps. We have detailed maps in the sea level rise study for the coastal plan. So we even know which bus routes have to be moved. We know how many linear feed of pedestrian walkways, all the utilities, how many storm drains, how many water, the water mains and the risers have to be moved as well. So we have, but I think we could synthesize that information in maybe a different format. But we need to, we need to start talking about it as a community and sort of galvanizing around, let's, let's figure it out.
So many things that we're doing now impacts, or that impacts are what we're doing now. And I, I'd just like the discussion tonight. Thank you. Any other topics, Commissioner's comments?
I would like to just say that the comments definitely go to support the conditional permit in the downtown area as opposed to a permit by right. With at least a conditional permit, we can take into account a possible ocean rising or what, you know. So I think Hansen, Hansen's point is well taken there.
I had the same thought. Dan, any comments? Hudson?
No comments this evening. I'm talked out.
Sandy?
Done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. And at this point, it is 5:21. I'd like to adjourn the meeting.